Good evening, everyone. I'll start our meeting here in council chambers at 6:00 PM. Roll call, please. Alderperson Murphy.
Present.
Macias.
Present.
Razak.
Present.
Timian.
Present.
Finch.
I mean.
McNeil.
Present.
Castro.
Present.
Schmidt.
Present.
All right, we have no remote electronic attendance. Public comment, chief, is there anyone signed up?
Uh, yes. Michael.
Michael, who?
If I wanted to speak, I would just want to my name down.
Okay, would you like to make public comment now?
No.
Oh, okay.
Well, we were here more to listen about the new school.
Okay.
And that agreement, and if we have questions.
Afterwards, yeah.
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else from the audience that didn't have a chance to sign up? Okay, we'll move on to our public hearing on the 2026 budget. I hereby open this 2026 budget hearing at 6:01 PM. Is there any testimony from those in favor of the budget as presented? In multiple sessions we've had previously. Seeing none, is there any testimony from those in opposition to the budget? Hearing none, are there any other questions or statements? Hearing none, this budget hearing is closed at 6:01. All set, Mr. Atkins?
Yep.
Thank you. All right, we have an oath of office, chief.
It meets all the requirements of the hearing.
Thank you, your honor. Appreciate the time to introduce you to Keegan Behrens, one of our newest police officers who's completed probation. Keegan is a Moline native, graduated Moline High School, joined the United States Marine Corps, and served honorably for four years before moving to Florida with his wife Caitlin. While in Florida, Keegan put himself through the College of Law Enforcement Training Academy, working concurrently with the Florida Department of Corrections. And after graduation from there, he worked and was hired by the Okaloosa County Sheriff's Office, where he served for several years. After traveling across the United States with his wife, he returned to his hometown to serve Moline and the Moline Police Department. He officially began with the Moline Police Department October 28th, 2024. Certainly glad to have Keegan back here in Illinois. I think he'll tell you, or will admit, that there's certainly a difference between Florida, law enforcement in Florida and Illinois, a bit of an adjustment. But as I told him, Florida nor Illinois has solved the criminal justice puzzle. And so we're glad to have him part of our team here in Moline, serving our community in his hometown of Moline. So mayor, if you would, I'd love if you could administer the oath of office.
I, Keegan Behrens.
I, Keegan Behrens.
Having been duly appointed as a police officer.
Having been duly appointed as a police officer.
For the city of Moline, Illinois.
For the city of Moline, Illinois.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will, sorry, that I will support the Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the state of Illinois.
The Constitution of the state of Illinois.
Will strictly adhere to the compiled statutes of the state of Illinois.
Will strictly adhere to the compiled statutes of the state of Illinois.
The Moline Code of Ordinances.
Moline Code of Ordinances.
And any Illinois rules of professional conduct.
And any Illinois rules of professional conduct.
Applicable to police administration.
Applicable to police administration.
That I will faithfully discharge the duties.
And that I will faithfully discharge the duties.
Of the position of police officer.
Of the position of police officer.
For the city of Moline, Illinois.
For the city of Moline, Illinois.
According to the best of my.
According to the best of my.
Get them off of that. And you can sign on each of these.
So, as I mentioned, Keegan served a one-year probation, since he was already a certified police officer. And so it's my honor to pin his badge on his uniform in signifying that he has entered his full appointment. His wife Caitlin couldn't make it, join us tonight. Boy, this is a lot, a lot harder when reversed, isn't it? And I give, I give all the family members such a hard time about not being able to get that on. Congratulations.
All right, thank you very much. We have a few board appointments. Mayor's appointment of Sierra Yave to the Moline Commission on Youth to fill the unexpired term of Emily Cummings to expire March 31st, 2027. And the mayor's appointment of Jennifer Smith to keep Moline Beautiful Commission to fill the unexpired term of Kirk Marsky to expire November 30th, 2027. And just so you're aware, Jennifer Smith isn't automatic on there because she's the new head of Moline Center. Okay? So if there's no questions on that, do not have questions on the agenda. We'll move to our committee of the whole items. 9.1. An ordinance amending Chapter 20 Motor Vehicles and Traffic of the Moline Code of Ordinances, Appendix 10 thereof, parking prohibited at any time by removing Ninth Street on the east side from Railroad Avenue South for a distance of 85 feet and adding Ninth Street on the east side from Railroad Avenue South for a distance of 60 feet. And amending Chapter 20 Motor Vehicles and Traffic of the Moline Code of Ordinances, Appendix 11 thereof, parking prohibited at certain times by removing on Monday through Friday, 8:00 AM to 5:00 PM Ninth Street on the east side, beginning at a point 85 feet south of Railroad Avenue, extending south for 30 feet, and adding on Monday through Friday, 8:00 AM to 5:00 PM Ninth Street on the east side, beginning at a point 60 feet south of Railroad Avenue, extending south for 53 feet. Mr. Vitas?
Staff is recommending approval of the request. And Director of Engineering, Dreyer, has met with these parties repeatedly. And this is a final solution, we hope, to what has been a challenging situation.
Thank you.
And he is online, I think he agrees. That was him.
I, I, I am. Good evening, everyone. We've been working with the neighbors, residents on Ninth Street here for some time, trying to come to a arrangement that works for everybody. And I think we've, third time is the charm, and we've got it this time.
Thank you. Is there a motion?
Second.
Motion by Castro, seconded by Macias. Discussion? Questions for Mr. Dreyer? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion passes. 9.2. An ordinance amending Chapter 20 Motor Vehicles and Traffic of the Moline Code of Ordinances, Appendix 35 thereof, altered speed limits, school speed limit, by removing 12th Avenue from 300 feet east of 54th Street to 200 feet east of 52nd Street Court. And amending Chapter 20 Motor Vehicles and Traffic of the Moline Code of Ordinances, Appendix 35 thereof, altered speed limits, school speed limit, by adding 12th Avenue from 1,125 feet west of 48th Street to 300 feet east of 54th Street. And amending Chapter 20 Motor Vehicles and Traffic of the Moline Code of Ordinances, Appendix 35 thereof, altered speed limits, school speed limit, by adding 48th Street from 11th Avenue D to 49th Street. Mr. Dreyer?
Sure, I can take this. We reviewed the school crossing protections at all the schools across the city this late summer and fall. And this was a change we wanted to make by adding 12th Avenue. There's a good number of school-aged kids on the sidewalks and things. So we wanted to install a school zone on 12th Avenue, which this is, does.
Thank you. Is there a motion?
Motion to approve.
Second. Motion by Schmidt, seconded by Castro. Discussion? Mr. Schmidt.
So was this just the case that we did not have a school zone around Wilson at all?
Correct, at least not on 12th Avenue. There are school zones further east for Franklin and then also on the North Cell Street, what is that, 43rd? So, yeah, this was just, we just wanted to clean things up. So we looked at all of them, and this was just a change we wanted to make.
Is it because, do we already have zones around John Deere?
Yes.
Okay.
Thank you for bringing this to the council because that safety on 12th is important. And even with a bike lane there, creating more space between cars and pedestrians, it's helpful to have this adjustment.
I absolutely agree.
I hope there's coordination with the police department also to catch people.
We work with a police department as part of the Traffic Engineering Committee and things as well. And Matt is out there as the school crossing guard on 12th Avenue on many days.
Thank you. And part of the reason I'm bothering to say that is because I have received a recent email regarding traffic laws and violations around school zones. So just letting you know. Thank you for that. Is there anything further from the council? If not, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion passes. 9.3. A resolution declaring the property located at 4108 Fifth Avenue, Moline, Illinois, as surplus, authorizing the mayor and city clerk to execute an attest to a purchase and sale agreement and do all things necessary to convey the above referenced city-owned property to McKinley Lofts LLC, and authorizing the city attorney and staff to do all things necessary to complete each of the city's responsibilities and enforce each of the city's expected benefits as referred to in such agreement. Mr. Parr?
Thank you, your honor. City is the owner of the property, which is approximately 6.06 acre site and home to the former McKinley School Building, which is currently vacant. The entire site's been identified as surplus property available for purchase. The city issued an RFP, a request for proposals for redevelopment of the property specifying the rehabilitation of former McKinley School Building and development of the balance of the site, and received three proposals from qualified firms. Those responses were evaluated by reviewing team and ranked based on the requirements of the RFP. Top-ranked response was provided by 321 Partners, which will develop the property through a special purpose development entity, McKinley Lofts LLC. The response complements rehabilitation of former McKinley School for 20 residential units and then development of the land to the west of the site for approximately 12 townhome-style rental apartments. So between those two buildings, trying to create a campus, a campus feel at the site. That results in a 32 residential market rate and workforce rental units. Staff recommends approval of the purchase and sale agreement with a purchase price of $10,000, as is beneficial to the city in order to dispose of the surplus property held in inventory. We're excited to have a development plan that will preserve the former McKinley School Building and be thoughtful about that. And we look forward to, and be, and be creative in maximizing the site as well, dealing with the topography and being, being thoughtful, and look forward to working with the community on, on design. And also starting from McKinley Lofts LLC, we have Jens Baker.
Can you make a few words?
Hello, my name is Jens Baker. I'm partners with Pete Stopoulos for 321 Partners. When it could be McKinley Lofts. Like I said, we're, we're excited. We, we wanna, you know, you see the property. It's a beautiful property that just needs some, some care, love and attention. And we want to be able to restore what's there. Restore that building, keep it nice for, for the surrounding community, not, not interfere with their views, but to, you know, kind of to utilize that portion and kind of restore the, restore the main building, get that looking great. Again, just it's a beautiful property. And then between the building and like Fifth Street, you know, kind of add in some, you know, functionality in that area as well. We're not looking to, you know, distract or, or take away from, you know, what is there, but to make it like a park-like setting, you know? Keep some of those really old trees, get rid of some of the, the brush and the scrub and just really clean it up and make it, make it something nice. So we're excited about that.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Are, we need a motion?
Motion to approve.
Mr. Timian?
Second.
Second by Castro. Discussion? Yes, Mr. McNeil?
Oh, I just want to thank Chris Parr, Bob Staff for this process. And I think finding the absolute right partner. I know it's early, so we're not talking design today, but some of the ideas that have been shared, I think, are fantastic. And I appreciate sharing with our constituents at my ward meeting, neighborhood meetings, as this project progressed. And just, I'm excited and looking forward to it. So thank you all.
Thank you, Dan.
Mr. Timian?
Thank you, your honor. I only now realize this is technically in my ward, so we can, we can fight over it. Congratulations. I did have a, I know we're not talking about design, but I had a question. Originally, this school had a terrace in front and did, was, did not have a forest. Will that be restored, or are we keeping the trees?
Obviously, there's, there's a lot of really old growth trees that would, we would love to save. We don't want to, you know, just open it up and make it just wide open and kind of, we feel that would kind of detract from, from the current view of the, what the surrounding neighbors have. So we want to, obviously, if we can keep the terrace, we can build back some of that, play back into the history, the historical nature of, of that property, while keeping some of the beauty that's, that's grown up in the past 50 years.
Yeah. Thank you.
Thank you. Anything further from the council? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion passes. Thank you, Mr. Parr. 9.4. Resolution establishing a time and place for a public hearing to consider the redevelopment plan and project for the 2025 Amendment to the TIF 13, our Moline Center redevelopment project area. Also, Mr. Parr?
Yes, it is.
Thank you. So this resolution is the next step to consider the redevelopment plan and project for the 2025 Amendment to the TIF 13, Moline Center redevelopment project area. Illinois Damas 2, LST, is the owner and record of the 0.636 acre tract, commonly known as 1236th Avenue. And this is the modern 2 development that you recently seen. City approved an inducement resolution on July 22nd proposing amendment to the RPA to expand its boundaries to include a portion of the real property. And that portion that would be added is 0.09 acres to 0.55 existing acres to form the 0.636 acres. So it's another 20 feet or so. It's just the single-family house immediately adjacent to the vacant land. So this is a necessary precondition to enable the city to actually provide tax increment financing assistance to the project. The city proposed, produced and placed a redevelopment plan for the 2025 Amendment to TIF 13 on file with the Office of the City Clerk on October 10th, 2025, which outlines, it goes to the protocol of the TIF Act to propose and describe the boundary amendment and just deem that it's viable and is supporting, it's not harmful to the development of the area, but it's supporting of the development of the area, consistent with the original formation of the TIF. So that plan's on file with the clerk. This resolution sets December 22nd at?
4:30.
4:30. In the City Hall, council chambers at 619 16th Street. Moline as the public hearing date and time to consider the redevelopment plan and project for the 2025 Amendment to the TIF 13, Moline Center redevelopment project area.
Thank you. Is there a motion?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion by Castro, seconded by Schmidt. Discussion? Thank you for keeping this project on track. I mean, after the last three meetings with the number of housing units coming on board, I think we don't want to see delay. Anything further from the council? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion passes. And we're to our informationals, 10.1, food assistance. Thank you, Ms. Whitley, I saw.
Where is she?
There she is. Saw you come upstairs. Thank you for doing this for us on fairly short notice.
All right. Well, good evening, everyone. Let me find my voice. As you're aware of, with the instability of the SNAP program, along with the government furloughs and shutdown, it's put a lot of economic strain on our Moline residents, where they cannot even meet their basic needs right now. We at the city have positioned ourselves in a good position to provide some local support. So I would like to talk about three of those things. The first one being food vouchers. This is a program we started with COVID. And we partnered with Hy-Vee, who has added 10% to the food vouchers that look like this, where we would pass these out to low-to-moderate income individuals and family, families. So we plan to do that on November 15th, Saturday, starting at 8:00. The doors open. Then we're going to do a second round in December, and that's going to be December 13th. And we're going to do that one at the city service center, so they're not standing out in the code. So they'll come into the gym, wait, and we will service them there at the city service center. But like I said, Hy-Vee donates 10% to the vouchers. We would be able to help 125 families each time with the $25,000 that we're putting towards it. How do they, how do we determine their eligibility? Well, we can do it by income, but it's faster for us to do it if someone else has already done it. And what I mean by that, if you already have the EBT SNAP card, if you already have an Illinois medical card, if your kids receive free or reduced lunch, you bring in those documents along with either your Illinois valid driver's license. It has to have your correct address, and it cannot be expired, or your Illinois ID along with a piece of mail that you received in the last 30 days, showing that address matching up to your ID along, say, for example, your SNAP card. You can walk out here with a voucher packet. So those are the three things that you need. And like I said, we've been doing this since COVID. It's a very popular program, but we're offering it to do it twice this season instead of once. And again, in November, it'll be here at City Hall. In December, it'll be at the city service building, both on a Saturday. So we open the doors at 8:00, we close the doors at 11:00, finish servicing anyone that is still in the building. And then we're usually out of here by noon, to be honest with you. The second thing that we're looking at doing, the Moline Care Crew. We've done a lot this year. It's been a good year for us. We would like to work with our local neighborhood associations and do a food drive for River Bend and stock some of the pantries around here. So we're looking at getting together and doing that. And then the third thing, sometimes families have to make a tough, a tough choice. What bill am I going to pay? Am I going to pay my rent, or am I going to go buy food? And for those who get in that position, where they receive like a eviction notice or a disconnection notice for their utilities, we have our emergency assistance program to help them. So those are three of the things that we would like to move forward on and offer to our residents here in Moline. We are one of the only cities here in the Quad Cities doing anything like this. We have really stood up to the challenge and come up with some ideals supported by our council and by our administration, and we thank you guys for that. And I think our residents will thank you for it as well. Couple things I want to talk about. What are other local people doing? As you know, I'm the town clerk in the city of Rock Island in South Rock Island Township. And so the townships recently got together, they want to do their part. So you're going to be seeing a press release come from them probably later this week, where they're creating a program that's going to help people who have lost their SNAP benefit, SNAP benefits, as well as their, either they're foreloaded or laid off. But again, all of our programs have a cap. So it's nice to have all these programs, but everything's going to have a cap. But there's other opportunities out there for people as well. So I think with everyone coming together and trying to do their part, you're going to see better results out there. So those townships do include South Moline and Moline Township, Rock Island and South Rock Island Township, Hampton Township, who services East Moline, and then Black Hawk Township, who services Midland. So you're seeing the Illinois townships come together as well. Now, with that being said, you know, we can't solve everything, but a couple impediments have come forth with the president's executive orders on immigration. And for that, I'm going to turn to Bill.
So as I've been warning people for a while now, the president has issued some executive orders that make it more difficult to assist individuals who may not have the proper legal status according to his orders. And we have received notice now that with regards to some federal funding, that those executive orders are being enforced. And that is going to require, if we use federal funds for certain types of aid, anything that could be considered to be federal benefits, then we have certain extra steps we're going to have to go through in order to satisfy those federal requirements. And if we either choose not to go through those steps or we do them incorrectly, we open ourselves up to liability with regards to the grant program. If we sign off on receiving the federal funds and then we intentionally don't follow the requirements under the president's executive orders, it opens the individuals who signed off on those grants to potential civil and criminal penalties, both. This actually, I, I'll give you a short history lesson on it. This dates back to 1996, when a federal law was passed, which almost immediately, it was 2001, there was a, an exemption passed under the authority that the Attorney General was given to basically say that a lot of federal programs did not have to follow this requirement with regards to verification of immigration status. So this law, although it's been in effect since 1996, that limits the applicability of, of federal funds to assistance to individuals who don't have the appropriate legal status, it has not been truly enforced for most of the time that it has been in effect because there was a blanket exemption granted in 2001 by the Attorney General. In July of 2025, the Attorney General rescinded that blanket exemption. And so there are certain federal programs that still assist people regardless of their legal immigration status. It is now much more difficult to determine when it is appropriate and when it is not. And so what we have done in one of the situations here is to change the, the mix of funding to eliminate the federal funding so that we don't have that as an issue. This is going to be an issue going forward. It is going to be something that we will have to deal with. It is something that I have been talking a lot with KJ regarding it. There, because of the fact that this was not enforced since, from 2001 to 2025, there is no case law giving us guidance on it. We have certain types of funds, like CBVG funds, that there is nothing to say that they are federal benefits, but if you read the definition, they, that seems to potentially fit into federal benefits. So the purpose here of my, hopefully still short talk, is to let you know that we are aware of this problem. We are doing what we can to deal with the problem. And we are trying to eliminate the need for compliance. And if we do have to end up guaranteeing that we have complied, we are going to make sure that we are following the law exactly as it is, is written, as it is required. There are some additional wrinkles that if any of you want to discuss these specifics with me, please contact me. I would love to go through all of the pages of material that I have had to read regarding this.
Thank you.
But if you don't want to, to do that, I more than understand and just feel confident that I am reading every page of these materials and I am making sure that we are complying with all the laws that appear to be enforceable. I will point out that there, there is some rhetoric with regards to individuals that don't have the appropriate legal status. Some, some statements are made with regards to Asylees, for instance. They are individuals that have appropriate legal status, even though there are some individuals who are speaking about them as if they don't and as if they are receiving funds illegally. That is not the case. Asylees are actually one of the groups that can receive federal funding in these types of programs. So we're making sure we're following the law as written, not the law the way that some people might want it to be.
Thank you.
Thank you, Bill. And in case you're wondering why we have the vouchers at $27.50, the reason that we divide them up is because there's just no change given back at the register. So if you go in and you're only going to buy $50 worth. So if you go in and you're only going to buy $50 worth, you know, that way you can use two vouchers, instead of losing the money on the $220 voucher packet. Again, I applaud the council, and I thank you guys for the opportunity to provide these services to our citizens. We have positioned ourselves very well, I think. And again, I think our citizens are going to be very grateful for this opportunity. So I would open it up to any questions that you may have.
Council members? Mr. Schmidt?
I don't have a question, but very much appreciate all of the work that goes into this, as well as bringing it forward at a time when it's very timely, when it's moving forward. Also appreciative of Bill and everyone on the team working through the legal pieces of that, and ensuring that we have a path to providing service to all the residents of Moline, while also complying with the laws. We don't always have to pick the federal laws, and so appreciate that we work within that framework. I think that as we look around, and the likelihood that this may get worse, I just want to at least state for myself, I can't speak for the whole council, but if there's a need for more, we need to know about it, and we, I think we rely on UKJ to be one of those people that can help us know that for sure. And not to say that's all on your shoulder, of course, but that's just something we're watching. And right now, that's just a very, very big worry in the community, very big worry for, in our schools and our, in the homes. So, thank you.
Thank you. And I appreciate that. And trust me, Bob and I have been in communication since we're so close in this building.
And I was lobbing stuff too.
Being creative, finding creative solutions.
Ms. Castro?
I was going to pretty much say exactly what he did, so just thank you.
Mr. Timmy?
I, my sincere hope is that the shutdown ends tomorrow, and we don't need this program. But as we know, if we just hold our breath, eventually we quit breathing, and we have to keep moving forward. So I'm glad that staff and the townships and everyone is working on a plan, and that you have teeth to it, and it's in action. So thank you for keeping breathing, because others can't right now. And so, doing a little bit of work on their behalf.
Thank you. Yes, Ms. Murphy?
How are we going to advertise this?
So it's already out on social media. Ashley's going to also be putting it out. It's already out to our neighborhoods. So word of mouth. People have been asking about it, and one of the delays was the immigration situation. I just didn't know which avenue to go. So I had a couple meetings with Bill, a couple meetings with Bob. So before I put it out and had to call it back, I wanted to make sure we crossed our Ts and dotted our Is, so.
Just want to put that bug back in your ear. I don't know if you and the school district have connected yet. I left you a message last week about it. So there's a possibility to, that there could be some joint use of, of resources, whether it's manpower or dollars, by coordinating with our school district as well, for things like food drives and stuff like that, to stock
Certainly.
the pantries and that kind of thing, or stock grocery bags. Those were the ideas floated by me.
All kinds of partners out there.
Yeah, exactly. So just, I wanted the council to know that there was a link that may, may be pursued, that I know. Anything further? Okay, thank you so much.
Thank you, guys.
10.2, November 2025, status and information report. Mr. Vitas?
Mayor and council have to provide you with the report ending October 31st here in November, showing where we have had some significant gains. The Comprehensive Plan Steering Committee kicked off, which, thanks to Director Mathias, his leadership, that is off and running. And, you know, hopefully, we'll be seeing that final plan in front of this council next year at this time.
November 26.
So he's already told if that's the date, and be there or be square, as they used to say. So anyhow, I'm sure they'll get it done, and that's really great. Engineering has been extremely busy this year, as you know, and a lot of great highlights. The 19th Avenue resurfacing from 7th Street to 16th Street is complete. I mean, that's just a pleasure to drive on 19th Street now, as opposed to the buckboard it used to be. So basically, from First all the way over to 16th. So it's a significant improvement. An old culvert at 35th Avenue, which was perplexing issue for years, finally got replaced south of Prospect Park. We had looked at a lot of different ways to solve that problem. One of the issues was perhaps even closing that road, not replacing that culvert. But in the end, we decided to replace that culvert, keep that road open, based upon studies that we did. So glad to see that got done. The Morgan Park Bike Path Phase One completion is now done. And they are still in the process of property acquisitions and working with the consultants to do that. So that project is still on schedule. I do want to point out something I normally wouldn't, but that's this employee appreciation picnic. We do this annually. HR, where are you? You're over there somewhere. There you are. So Leah's crew, as we'll call them, Director Madison's crew, did a fantastic job of putting together an event that brought together literally, for the first time, I think, every department was represented. That has not happened before. We had the opportunity to go up to beautiful Peterson Park. If you haven't been to Peterson Park, it's probably one of the hidden gems in our park system. And on a cold day like, you know, like it's been, with the fire going in those multiple fireplaces, it's just a great place to lose yourself a little bit, looking at the river and at the foliage. But we had a great event, great turnout, and kudos to the HR department. They've been doing some great work with our employees. And I could go on and on, but I'm not going to. There's other questions. I'm happy to answer those. If not, you're always free to call me, stop in, make an appointment, whatever. I will point out tomorrow is Alvin Castro's ward meeting at the library at
Six o'clock?
So we will be there for that. And then, I believe, Alderperson, Timian has one.
Seventeenth?
Seventeenth of the month. And that will be over at the Garden Center. So just pointing those two, two additional events out. And Ashley's doing a great job of noticing and getting things out there for everybody. And we'll do a great job with this food assistance. I have to, have to compliment KJ, have to compliment Bill, Chris, Mathias. I mean, we really put our heads together in terms of how to assist the public beyond just that, which we've done, you know, in years past since COVID. And we think we've got a really a great program, at a great time of need in the community. So don't be surprised if I don't come back to you at some later date, if things don't improve in our nation's capital, and that we see an end to the situation that's been ongoing now for day 35 days. We don't come back and look for additional sources of funding for the food voucher program. So just giving you a heads up.
Can I just tack on to that, that it was good to talk at our listening post last Monday. People did have questions about how we were going to be impacted by the SNAP cuts, et cetera. And I think I quoted a story related to the National Food Prize that was taking place in Des Moines, that the expert said that food security is a safety issue. It was good to talk with the, with the community about, yeah, if people are hungry, they're going to find food somewhere, and we want everyone's home to be safe and secure, every business to be safe and secure. So it's not just about tossing out food so people aren't hungry. There's also a safety aspect to it, that I think we don't always think about. So I appreciate the efforts there. And I'm sure the police department appreciates that as well. Anything further from the council on the status and information report? Okay, well, hearing none. We'll close out that meeting and call our regular council meeting to order. Fledge of Allegiance, please.
I always missing this flag.
Okay.
Okay.
It's in the right over there.
I pledge allegiance
To the flag of the United States of America, to the great public for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
Do you have an invocation, Mr. Timian?
I do not.
Roll call, please. Alderperson Murphy?
Present.
Macias?
Present.
Razak?
Present.
Timian?
Present.
Finch?
Present.
Castro?
Present.
Schmidt?
Present.
Don't believe we have any electronic attendances there. Public comment at this time, chief, or anyone in the audience?
My husband and my father-in-law would have wanted to ask that question. So he um
Just tell us who you are, and you got three minutes.
I'm sorry. My name is Ursula Miniter, former resident of Moline, Illinois, actually current temporary resident of Illinois, or Moline, because I sold my house a couple weeks ago, and I'm staying with my in-laws. They live at 4105 7th Avenue, so just above the McKinley School. And so their concern, and some of the other neighbors, is about the property value of their homes and how it might be impacted by the development. Does the council have projections on how their property values might be in flux, or will taxes increase or decrease because of this development?
There's a question we can take to our administrators and Mr. Parr.
Okay.
We couldn't answer it right now.
Right.
Normally, public comment isn't a back and forth anyway.
Okay.
But we'll register the question.
And so when would this, I guess, be appropriate for him to?
He can send an email or make a phone call anytime.
Okay.
But the staff would have to look, I mean, they'd have to look into those specifics.
Yep.
But when you're talking about new development and new housing, the general going philosophy is that it improves your values. It doesn't necessarily detract. Am I incorrect or correct?
Right. So that's the general, general theme, is trying to improve the neighborhood and raise the values.
Thank you. Thank you. All right. Any further public comment? Okay, consent agenda.
Your Honor, I request the approval of Committee of the Whole Council and Executive Session Meeting Minutes of October 14, 2025. Committee of the Whole and Executive Session Meeting Minutes of October 18, 2025. Committee of the Whole and Council Meeting Minutes of October 21, 2025. Appointments made on November 4, 2025, and consent agenda items 18.1 through 19.1 inclusive.
Motion to approve consent agenda?
Second.
Motion by Timian, seconded by Razak. Roll call, please.
Alderperson, Timian?
Aye.
Macial?
Aye.
Castro?
Aye.
Schmidt?
Aye.
Murphy?
Aye.
Macias?
Aye.
Razak?
Aye.
Seven ayes, no nays, that motion carries. Non-consent agenda resolutions. Item number 21.1, a resolution approving an agreement by and between the City of Moline, acting by and through Bass Street Landing Special Service Area Number Five, Board and NAI Rural Commercial Company, for property maintenance services for Special Service Area Number Five, for a one-year term, with automatic renewal for two successive one-year terms, effective November 15, 2025, and authorizing the Bass Street Landing Special Service Area Number Five Board President to sign said agreement. Motion to approve.
Second.
All right. Motion by Castro, seconded by Razak. Discussion. Hearing none. Roll call, please.
Alderperson, Timian?
Aye.
Macial?
Aye.
Castro?
Aye.
Schmidt?
Aye.
Murphy?
Aye.
Macias?
Aye.
Razak?
Aye.
Seven ayes, no nays, that motion carries. Item number 21.2, a resolution establishing a time and place for a public hearing to consider the redevelopment plan and project for the 2025 amendment to the TIF 13 Moline Center redevelopment project area. Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion by Castro, seconded by Razak. Discussion. Hearing none. Roll call, please.
Alderperson, Timian?
Aye.
Macial?
Aye.
Castro?
Aye.
Schmidt?
Aye.
Murphy?
Aye.
Macias?
Aye.
Razak?
Aye.
Seven ayes, no nays, that motion carries. Non-consent agenda, first reading ordinances. Item number 22.1, an ordinance authorizing the mayor and city clerk to execute an attest to redevelopment and economic incentive agreement between the City of Moline and Moline Dispatch Apartments LLC, related to the TIF 15 5th Avenue redevelopment project area as amended.
Motion to approve.
Motion by Timian. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Macias. Discussion. Hearing none. Roll call, please. Oh, I'm sorry.
Advance to second reading?
Oh, sorry.
Undo?
Yeah. Would you like to redo your motion?
Your Honor, I'd like to make a motion to advance to second reading.
Second.
Thank you. Motion by Timian, seconded by Macias. Discussion. Hearing none. Roll call, please.
Alderperson, Timian?
Aye.
Macial?
Aye.
Castro?
Aye.
Schmidt?
Aye.
Murphy?
Aye.
Macias?
Aye.
Razak?
Aye.
Seven ayes, no nays, motion to advance to second reading carries, and that's all I have this evening, Your Honor.
Thank you. Great miscellaneous business. As you know, we got to celebrate the veto session passage of Senate Bill 2111. That was the transit bill that included us and our train project. It was an exciting afternoon on Friday, and really, it's okay if you were not able to be there. But I think we were, our interests were well represented by the folks that were able to help get that passed. And I have been in contact with members of that group to say, hey, we need a timeline on what happens from now to June 26th, I think it is, when that money kicks in. What has to be prepared? How can we keep our foot on the gas pedal? Because, you know, it, it's now, the governor has to sign the bill, but also I dot needs to do whatever, not negotiating, but whatever they have to do to have everything in place, so that when that money's available, we're moving on the projects that, that improve the tracks, et cetera, so that we can just keep the project moving. So I think that it's just good to share with you that the people have not, like, taken their eye off what really needs to happen now, which is a lot of work, so that we can get a train down those tracks. That's all for now. Go ahead, Ms. Murphy.
Nothing, Your Honor.
No, nothing, Your Honor. Mr. Timian?
Your Honor, I had the pleasure of walking the vacated 7th Avenue like I was in a zombie movie on the way to council tonight. It looks fantastic. Like, I'm so excited. The roundabout's done. I think concrete's just curing right now. It looks like it's almost completely finalized. So just kudos to everyone involved who helped get that done, both stages. I think it's a huge improvement in the area.
Thank you.
Nothing, Your Honor.
Castro?
Well, Mr. Vitas stole my thunder. I was going to talk about my, my ward meeting tomorrow at the library, but if you didn't hear when he taught, when he was talking about it, my ward meeting is tomorrow at the library at six o'clock. Also, just a shout out too, to city staff. They had a really great altar at the Mercado's Day of the Dead Festival on Saturday. It was a memorial to former mayor Stan Leach, and it was really great. So, thank you, everyone.
Human Rights Commission also had
Yep, Human Rights Commission also had an altar there too.
Also had an Ofranda, and that was really nice.
Yep.
Mr. Schmidt?
Nothing, Your Honor.
Mr. Vitas?
I would just point out, because time will pass and people will forget, but if you'll recall years ago, referring to 7th Avenue, that started as a grant application by KJ and Tara during the dark days of COVID. And they were successful in getting the grant, which resulted in this project being done by engineering. So kudos to them, as well as engineering for the work. And Hutchinson Engineering for the great job, and Centennial Contractors. I mean, this was a great team effort, and you're right, it's a game changer for downtown. That's all I have.
Okay. Any last public comment? All right. And I do not believe we have executive sessions, so I need a motion to adjourn.
No move.
Oh, yeah. Is there another, is there a second?